Well, Lucy's City Council, work session to order at the day of time.
It's horrible.
And the place, as advertised, our next order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd please stand and join us in reciting our Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, Council. Councilor Schroeder has asked and received an excused absence. She will not be here today. And Counselor Klein, can you hear us?
Yep, I hear you loud and clear.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel, next up, we have citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens wishing to comment on agenda items or other matters they wish to bring to the Council's attention, excluding those scheduled for a public hearing. Yes, there may not be another opportunity to comment once an agenda item is addressed. Individuals are encouraged to speak at this time. Individuals are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the mayor. In consideration of others wishing to speak, commentary is limited to three minutes. If you have citizen comments today, we have a stand right over there. The green circles in the ceiling are the microphones, so you have to speak up and kind of project your voice. Otherwise, those listening at home, including our Counselor Klein, may not be able to hear you. So with that, I will open up any citizen comments we may have today. Bob, welcome. I need your name and city of residence.
Yeah. Speaking to the green circle in the ceiling there, Bob Blakey, city of Lewiston. My question is not directed to the Council. My question is actually going to be addressed to Dan Anderson. And if he has an opportunity to answer it during his presentation, I would welcome him. If not, I fully understand. I did not prepare him ahead of time with the question. Idaho is one of the 14 non-disclosure states left in the state, left in the United States. And what I mean by that is, the rest of the states in the United States report the sale of a piece of property. Idaho is one of 14 states that is not required to report the sale of a piece of property. So in other words, Dan's job, he, sometimes he has to guess. It's voluntary. Sometimes he might get 50 or 60 percent or return on a note from when they send out to people who sell a piece of property. My question to Dan would be, if our state legislators were to address this issue and make us a non-disclosure, and take that away and make us a disclosure state, would that make the job of all of the assessors throughout the state of Idaho easier to establish fair prices of homes? And also could possibly lead to the possibility of lower prices? Instead of guessing what a home is worth, you report it. It seems odd, it's always seemed odd to me that most of the states require you to report the sale price of your home. We do not. And it would seem to me that that would be a tool that if I was an assessor, I'd want to have. Not, not be, sorry, not be denied that. So that's my question. If you have an opportunity to answer that during your presentation, I would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. I got you, Bob.
I got it, I got it.
If you tip over and fall, then I-
Stay away from firefighters. Next thing I know, you'll send the EMS unit to get me.
Thank you, Bob. Further citizen comments tonight? Okay, well, before we move on, I would like to welcome Brian and Bob both who are here. Candidates for City Council this election, so we appreciate you being here and listening and participating in the process. That's what it's all about, so thank you. Counsel, next up, we have item four, motion to amend the agenda. Counselor Wright?
Yes, I would move to amend the agenda to add the appointment of Julie Cray to a three-year term on the Audit Committee as new action item before discussion items. The reason for the amendment is that the mayor will be unavailable for October 13th meeting, and the council action is required prior to the Audit Committee's next scheduled meeting. The need for this action was not identified in time to meet the posting deadline, and it is being added in good faith to allow the committee to proceed as scheduled.
Second? It's been moved by Counselor Wright, second by Council President Clever, to amend the agenda to add the appointment of Julie Cray to a three-year term on the Audit Committee as a new action item before discussion items. Is there further, no, actually, we don't discuss this, but those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Council. Next, we move to room number five, Audit Committee Appointment. This is an action item, considering appointing Julie Cray to a three-year term on the Audit Committee. I move to approve the appointment, the reappointment of Julie Cray to a three-year term on the Audit Committee.
Second.
Been moved by Mayor Johnson, second by Counselor Forstman, to approve the appointment, reappointment of Julie Cray to a three-year term on the Audit Committee. Is there discussion? There are none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Counsel, and thank you, Julie, for listening, for serving. Counsel, next up, we are going to move to room number six, Discussion Items. Please note that identifying an item as an action item does not require the City Council to vote on that item. The first item today is going to be a discussion on property taxes and levies, presented by Nesper's County Assessor Dan Anderson and Nesper's County Clerk Patty Weeks on property taxes and levies. I would also, Counsel, refer to an email I sent out to you earlier that just outlines a little bit more of the roles of both the county assessor and the county clerk, and what their primary responsibilities are. I think it's important for us as a city council to have a pretty clear understanding of what it is they do, so that we can, you know, take most, full advantage of that, but also so that there's no confusion moving forward. And I did find it interesting, Dan, not to leave you out, but the city clerk here, this is taken out of the Idaho Association of Counties Manual, says right there that the county clerk holds five distinct roles in a county that cover a range of duties. That's impressive. They list the clerk, auditor, the recorder, the board of county commissioners, clerk, and chief elections officer. So that's quite a load that you carry, so thank you for your service. Dan, I'm going to turn this over to you and Patty. Again, if you'd please come up to the podium, and then the green circles are the microphones. We just have to speak loudly and clearly here. And then if you would like to take questions during the presentation, you can let the Council know or have you want to do that.
Absolutely.
But we'll turn it over to you. Thank you, and welcome.
Well, I see that you slow that head a little bit.
No, I'm kidding.
Got to have worked together for, god, what, 25, I don't know.
27 years.
Whatever, yeah, whatever. First of all, thank you. I appreciate this. This is the, this is the first time in all my years with the county that I've actually had the opportunity to come and talk with the Council. And so I'm going to take full advantage of it, and I appreciate it. I had a conversation with Counselor Spicklemeyer, and we had very good discussion. And he said, you know what? What you ought to do is to come and, and let's talk a little bit as kind of a refresher course for some folks, and maybe there are things that you did or didn't know. And we hope that we can fill in some of the blanks. I remember when I first went to work for Nesper's County, my old boss at the time was CA Pete Peterson. And I can remember on, you know, very early on, that he told me, he said, "You're about to learn the appraisal process, and it's very important that you remember." It is an important job, because what you need to do is to make sure that you have a fair, full, and accurate appraisal of the properties underneath your jurisdiction for a stable funding mechanism, not just for the city, not for the county, but for the total. And I counted them up to date. There are 30 taxing districts that rely on our valuation. I'll start by, with the basics. There are three types of property in the state of Idaho. There's real property, there's personal property, and there's operating property. And each one of these then add towards the valuation of the taxable valuation, excuse me, of property within Nesper's County and throughout the state. The state of Idaho will do the appraisal of operating property. And operating property are those things across not only county lines, but could be state lines. Railroads, electric companies, gas lines, and even the barge lines here are part of the operating property. That is done by the state of Idaho and is apportioned then to each county that that railroad may be in or that electric company. They give that value to me and, of course, homely to Patty. Real property, I'll make this one simple. This is the way I can still remember. Real property is dirt and everything on it. That's pretty simple. That's going to be any kind of buildings, residential, commercial, any of those kinds of things. That's real property. And then personal property. Personal property is that which property that's used in the businesses that either for retail or manufacturing. That's everything from a huge paper machine that I can think of in East Lewiston to it could be a copy machine within, within an office. However, lately, the personal property has been, the role on personal property has changed a lot. The legislature a few years ago said, "We're going to exempt the first $100,000 of personal property." That dropped off a whole lot of properties that we had been assessing. And they were going to pay back the dollars that was exempted. And that works okay, except as time goes on, there are new businesses come in, they're not paying on it, and the amount of money that we're getting from the state, it shrinks. Let me give you a good idea. In the year of 2001, two.
Thereabouts.
Yeah, thereabouts. Agricultural equipment was exempted. And the amount of money that was collected at that time, we get back $74,000 from the state. That's all. It was to be indexed, but they never got around to indexing it. So it kind of shows you that money in 2000 might have been much bigger, but as it goes along, it shrinks. Come along, two years ago or three years ago, the legislature exempted, the exemption went from $100,000 to $250,000. That wiped out a whole lot of tax base that used to be enjoyed. But the, but the one that was probably the biggest was the, and there was some payback on that also. But again, it's going to shrink over time, because as new businesses come in, they don't pay, and it's just, it's going to end up not meaning much. But the legislature completely got rid of all the construction equipment. That meant $13 million of taxable value. So who makes up the difference on that? Here we are. And that's just what happens. Let me, let me give you, now is a good time to, when I first went for my appraisal license, I had a teacher by the name of Jewett Farley. And Mr. Farley was an appraiser in Louisiana. It wasn't Louisiana, it was Louisiana. And he was, he was a real card. But he told me something, and it made sense. He said, "I think anybody can understand how this works." There's 10 people decide they want to go to dinner, and so they get on a bus, and they all go to a fancy restaurant. They get steak and lobster, they get the finest wines, they got decadent desserts. And they all have a good time, and they eat. And the bill comes, and the bill's $100. Well, okay, there we go, $10 apiece, right? Well, you know, the one person said, "You know, that steak was just a little bit tough. I'm not so sure I want to pay that." You got the second person says, "You know, that wine tastes a lot like vinegar." And the third person says, "You know, my stomach hurts from that." So let's, let's do it this way. Instead of the bill, let's call it a budget. Now, and let's call those people who aren't paying exemptions. So you see, regardless of the fact that the bill is $100, there's only seven people, because three get exempted. Do you realize that there are a total of, when I first became assessor, there are 15 more exemptions than when I first was assessor in 1988? We're now past the double N's. I think we're OO or someplace there. So every time an exemption is written, that means fewer people are paying, but that budget stays the same, whatever the budget that was done, or the bill in this case. Let me give you another little example. We'll just say those same 10 people get on the bus, and they decide they're going to go a month later, and they're going to go have dinner again. They got the same thing. They got steak, they got lobster, they got great wine, decadent desserts. And afterwards, it is determined by someone that some of the people got a little bit more service or portion, excuse me, that's what I meant to say, a little bit more portion. The bill comes, it's still $100, but there's some people are going to, well, they're going to have to pay a little more. They're going to pay $15, and five people are only going to pay five. Now, the, what I am telling you here is what happens to us and has been happening when you see a shifting of values, and quite honestly, it's been shifting from all of the types of property to residential property. That's where the shifting has been going on. So you see, what's going to happen, there are five people going to go, "What are you guys doing with all the extra money?" There isn't any extra money. There's no extra money. $100 is all it's costing. It's who's paying it? Five people are paying $5? Five people are paying 15? That's what's been happening to us. Now, I want to, I want to say this, Patty's going to go into the development of levies. But there's some good news, and, and, and I guess we say good news and bad news, it's happened. This last, or this year, the county commissioners took a 0% increase. That should be good news for everybody. That means nobody pays anymore. All what that means is that the county doesn't collect anymore, because residential property, once again, went a little higher than all other types of properties. Commercials, industrials, farms. They are going to see, and it's one of the most difficult things that I have in my job, how can my taxes possibly go up? How is it possible when they're not getting any more money? It's because the values have shifted. Residential property went up faster than others. The county's not going to collect one dime more. The other people are going to feel the tax increase. So I guess with that, if there are, if you have any questions, I tried to keep it reasonably simple without, you know, going into it. It is a difficult thing, and it's, I guess, over the years, I just get used to doing it. And hopefully, I've been able to articulate kind of how it works in a, in a manner that you can understand. Patty is going to finish up on the part, maybe she'll get a little more technical about levies and such. But I will stand for questions, if anybody has any.
Counselors, Counselor Spicklemeyer.
So, Dan, again, thanks for coming. On the commercial property that isn't going up in value, what drives its increase, decrease in value?
Sales. Thank you for that. I don't, I don't do taxes, and I know that that usually gets a chuckle any place that I go. But I don't levy taxes, I don't collect taxes, and I don't appraise property on your ability to pay taxes. We go around and look, once every five years, at each individual property, just to see if something has changed with that property. I know it may come as a shock, sometimes people forget to buy building permits that we work off of, but we'll go around and check once every five years and note any changes. But we do appraise every year. And how do we do that? We gather the sales of each of the different types of properties. Commercial properties, residential properties, and they're even separated between manufactured homes. And they're even different, sales in like East Lewiston are not used for sales that may take place in the Elks addition, for example, because there are all different neighborhoods and such like this. So it's the sales. I don't tell you what your property's worth. People that buy and sell property tell me what it's worth. I am a thermometer. I'm just telling you how hot it is. I don't set the thermostat. They can get mad, jump up and down, and call me names, but the truth is, the sales are what indicate what's happening with value either up or down. And I know it's fashionable to say, "The values, once you got them up, never go down." That's not true. That's not true. I can show you. We keep a history of, of all the values, and you can see where it has gone up and down. Most people want to talk taxes, and that's where I stop them, because I don't have anything to do with the taxes. It's the value is my job. Patty can tell you how the taxes work, I guess. I'm going to throw it on you. So we do appraise each and every year, and why something goes up or down, it's because the marketplace has changed. It's either gone up or down.
Counselor Wright?
So just to better understand the, the value of a commercial property. If I wanted to go buy a commercial property right now, the shifting suggests that I would potentially pay less for the commercial property than maybe I would have the previous year. Or maybe it didn't increase as much, so I wouldn't pay at that same percentage increase that if I was buying a residential property. It's not that same increase in growth.
Commercial, commercial properties have been enjoying, because of reduced levies, and they're not going up as fast. There's no question that the taxable value has not gone up, and as the levies go down, yeah, the, the amount of taxes that they pay is lesser. As an astute businessman, most commercial properties, not all, but most of them, you're going to, you're going to buy based on what? An income stream. That's what you're going to use. You're going to say, "Okay, what, what kind of a business is it?" We are, we are to consider all three approaches to value, the cost, the market approach, and the income approach. And the income approach is usually, what will this business in this building, in this location, what kind of a income stream will it generate? And that's usually how commercial properties are, are bought and sold. Not always. Would you expect to pay less? I don't, I don't know if taxes make that much difference in commercial properties, even as they would in some residential properties. I know that I hear from people all the time, because commercial properties have the opportunity to pass the taxes on. They have to. They wouldn't be in business. It's Joe homeowner. That's it. When you send me the bill, I admit, I got no place to pass it on to. And so I don't know if the taxes on commercial properties are as, I don't want to use the word onerous, but as difficult or used in decision-making as to whether they should or shouldn't buy that, that property, specifically because I say that they're passed on. Yeah, you have to do that.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
So, Dan, just, are you going to go through the numeric breakdown of how the property taxes are determined?
How about, we can, and maybe tag team if she gets, if she gets, she's not going to get lost, she's the one that does. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor?
Dan, before you turn it over to Patty, I just want to ask you the question, give you an opportunity to respond to it. Who checks your numbers? And I think I know the answer, but-
Say that again?
Who checks your numbers?
Oh.
Yeah, because, you know, folks might think that, well, Dan says this is what it is, and there you go. You, you told us you go out every five years and look at the properties, but who's checking your numbers? And do you get audited?
Oh, boy. The state of Idaho, each and every year, prior to sending out assessment notices, will look at all of our sales, and they do, do a ratio study to make sure. We have to be within 10%, 90 to 110% of confidence that our numbers are correct. If, if the sales, let me just give you a good idea. Let's just say that sales, we have five homes that were at 100%, and those homes sell, and sometime within the year, and they've all fallen to like 63%. In other words, the value has gone up. If I don't raise those up, the State Tax Commission will come in and order that I do that. And if I do not do that, they then will hire an appraisal firm. They'll come in, they'll do the reappraisal, and the money for that will be withheld from the sales tax that the cities, and the counties, and all of the other jurisdictions that rely on it. I don't think I would be very, I wouldn't be very welcome with the commissioners and the mayor and the council if all of a sudden money that you relied on for streets and other things from the sales tax, if you didn't- if you didn't get it because I didn't do my job. Yes, we are monitored every year to make sure that we're within standards. I never run to a hundred percent. I'm a little more conservative, I run to ninety percent, ninety-seven percent of market value. Uh, I do that just in case things start to go down, you know, um, I wouldn't be over appraising. So I've chosen to do that. And if I, Mike, Mr. Mayor, you asked the question and about, about full disclosure. Absolutely. We in the larger, uh, towns, we, we're lucky enough, we have enough sales and stuff, enough data to get by, it gives us a good idea. Do we get them all? No. Where do we get them? We get them from every place, from fee appraisers, uh, people, uh, insurance people. Any place that we can get sales, we, we use them. Cause we want to be as accurate as we can. It's not my job to put a burden on anybody. It's my job to try to find the market value. And so in the smaller, uh, uh, communities are the ones that have the problem. Yes, they should be, and you're right. Uh, most every other state, in fact, I know they even publish them in the paper. I've seen the paper before where there's, say fourteen oh nine Burch Avenue where I live, sold for this much. You know, uh, I don't know what the reason is, but it has been something that we've been fighting, uh, since I became assessor in nineteen eighty-eight. Won't even hear it, they don't even wanna discuss it, so. But yes, they should. I'm gonna sit down now.
Oh, you, you don't have to sit down.
I'm gonna throw.
You can stand, you can sit. Twenty-seven years, you know?
I know.
Well, first of all, thank you for inviting us. Um, it's great to talk about stuff that I really like to talk about, a refresher on levies is interesting to me. Uh, I wanted to start a little bit about the budget process and how you get to a levy. Um, in the county, and I'm sure the city is somewhat similar, uh, my office sends a letter to the department heads and says, "Hey, by this date, turn in what you need, your budget requests." Get those, go through them, and then we start having series of budget hearings over those. Then meanwhile, Dan's office is putting together the values. I get a preliminary value from his office in June. And so I can kinda have a little bit of the temperature of what our new construction's gonna be, how much did we grow? This last year, we grew, Nesper's County grew in value about half a billion dollars. It was great. We, City of Lewiston, I believe you had a new construction alone was thirty-four million.
Was it the city's?
The city, definitely. And so budgets are made up of not just property taxes. Sometimes people will look at the bottom line of the budget and think it's all property tax. And it's not. A big part of it is property tax, but also we have, uh, grants, we have fees, we have revenue sharing with the state of Idaho with, with sales tax, um, some highway money, and as well as savings. All of these things are the revenue sources of, of your budget. But pinpointing just to the property tax portion. So like Dan said, Nesper's County, we didn't take our three percent. You're limited on how much property tax dollars you can go up three percent. Is it plus, um, some new construction, some forgone? And we'll, we'll talk about that. We have, Nesper's County has had the lowest levy rate since about two thousand and one. That is great news. The city of Lewiston, however, very interesting. Uh, you took your three percent, you took part of your forgone, and your levy rate, your levy rate, and I got tired. So this sheet has a list of all the years through nineteen ninety-six. Your levy rate is as low as it's been since nineteen ninety-six. And maybe.
Historic lows, wow, levy rate down, just to make sure they're.
So when you, when you took your three percent and part of your forgone, your levy rate still went down. So that means your value's growing. And I know that the city of Lewiston, I don't live in the city of Lewiston, I live in Rubens, well, just outside of Rubens. And to be clear there.
Rubens?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
To me, when I look at the city of Lewiston, I, I see more of a full-service city. And so if you weren't a full-service city, you could actually have a bunch of districts that provided some of these functions. For example, you could have a separate district with a governing board that, um, does airport. You could have a separate district that does, manages a cemetery. You could have a separate district for fire, EMS, police. Library, you could have a separate library district. You could have a separate parks and rec district. You could have a separate district for streets. You look at the city of Boise, the city of Boise does not do streets. It's like, how can that be? They have a highway district, Ada County Highway District. And so when you look at your levy rate and your taxes, it's good to be able to think about, well, would it be more beneficial if these functions that you provide your citizens were their own separate entity? You know, you would have a whole nother administration involved in that. But these are, but right now, the city of Lewiston, you're a full service. And your levy rates are, are low. So to determine the levy rate, what we do is we take your property tax budget. We don't care about which's in your savings, we don't care about fees you generate, we look at the property tax portion. So you take this portion, and then you take your value that he provides, and the state of Idaho provides, and you divide it, and then you get your levy rates. That's how that is determined. And it's nine digits.
If I, if I can, how many times have I heard in the past, and I'm sure Patty has too, they're saying, "Well, you know what I'd like to do? I'd like to keep the levy the same." You, you can't, you can't. A levy is an answer to a, a, a mathematical problem.
Except.
Except?
There's always an exception. So, and we can't, so the timing of the levy and calculating the levy. So I believe the city publishes their notice in the newspaper twice, and then you have your public hearing. The county publishes in the newspaper once, and then our public hearing is the day after Labor Day. We are waiting for values from the state of Idaho. The state of Idaho does the central, you know, the railroads, the utilities. I have the assessor of values, but I need the other piece. And so you can't just say, this is what I want the levy rate to be. You can't do that. You know what you need to operate, your property tax portion, and then once we get the value, we end up with our levy rates. Now, uh, I wanna take that a step further. This, this is a worksheet that I do, just to kind of track to see how things are, come along. What we have here is I took several homes. We have a home that's worth a hundred and ninety thousand, up to a home that's worth eight hundred thousand. What does the city's levy rate do to these homes? Now, what I don't have in this piece of information is if the value changed, right? Because values constantly, it's on the move, up, down. But if these homes stayed the same from last year, which is the top. So let's look at a three hundred thousand dollar home. The maximum, okay, so a three hundred thousand dollar home, you can see that's right in the middle of the sheet there. And then the next number is the homeowner's exemption. It's a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So you take that part of the value out of the equation, and you have a hundred and seventy-five thousand, that's taxable value. And then you times it by your levy rate, and this person, uh, last year was paying one thousand seventy dollars and two cents for taxes. If you go back down, go on down to this year, now we have all of our numbers in. You see that same three hundred thousand dollar home, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Oh wait, the homeowner's exemption didn't change. Okay. And so it's still the value's a hundred and seventy-five. You have your new levy rate, which, what did I just say? It's the lowest it's been at least since nineteen ninety-six. So they are now paying one thousand fifty dollars and eighty-one cents. So they actually are decreasing this year twenty-one dollars and twenty-one cents over last year. Even though you took the three percent plus part of your forgone. Forgone is money that you didn't, the years that you didn't take that three percent, it's just kind of in a holding pattern there. And so you're able to, to dip in for a portion of it. And so down at the very bottom, the last part is your tax levy rate decreased one point nine eight percent over last year. Now, we hear people, uh, they're, they're upset about their, their paying taxes with their homes. And here's part of the problem, and Dan discussed it too. It's the homeowner's exemption is not indexed. The homeowner's exemption is not following the market. And what this sheet shows, from nineteen eighty to eighty-two, the homeowner's exemption was ten thousand dollars. Eighty-three to two thousand and five, that's a long stretch, fifty thousand dollars. And then somewhere in there, they started indexing it. Then, uh, well, Dan said values go down. Values go up, it's a market, it fluctuates. And so they, in two thousand and seventeen, they said, alright, a hundred thousand dollars. And it was a hundred thousand dollars until two thousand and twenty-one. And what has the market been doing in, in Idaho with homes? Oh, yeah.
Ain't going down.
It's, it's not keeping up. And you can see in the sheet on the right, uh, we have the house index price used of what it really probably should have been. And there's quite a gap in this. And so in two thousand and twenty-four, the house price index used should have been two hundred and forty, or two hundred, I'm sorry, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars. And so this shift that's been happening, um, started with the ag exemption. And then a hundred thousand dollars for personal property exemption. And then, and you know, the, the hundred thousand, it's like, okay, your restaurants, you know, you're not having to put personal property down for your tables and your bar stools and whatnot. And then they added a hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand. And so it's, it's just been, uh, kind of a, a, you know, a domino effect to a certain extent. And so the, the cure would be to look at a different, um, homeowner's exemption, if it could be part of a market. That, that's my opinion there. How's that? Was that my quick enough questions? Oh my.
Uh, so when you mean idea of, are you referring to like the levy, the homeowner's exemption adjusting with the market? So you know, your house goes up to a hundred thousand versus it was fifty thousand last year, now it's gonna raise ten percent.
You know, I think, based on a market would be helpful. I mean, because the market is what it is. And so when it's up high like this, um, because you, you have, um, Dan and I have talked, and, and you have people that make really great deals on selling their house, right?
Always gonna be some that.
And some, some deals are just stolen.
Yep, they are.
And so, you know, if there, there needs to be some sort of adjustment of some sort. And whether it's, it's indexed to this index or something, but to be able to provide the relief to the homeowners. Or even the circuit breaker for those that are, um, I don't know if you wanna explain real quick what the circuit breaker is?
Yeah, real quickly, and, uh, I think the state, in fact, uh, it was Mayor Johnson at the time, uh, actually kind of took off on that and, and to help, uh, folks with their garbage rates, uh, back in the day. It's been, I don't remember, but this, what the circuit breaker exemption basically does is it's based on the income that, uh, people make. The less they make, the more they get off, um, to the maximum of fifteen hundred dollars. It doesn't take much of a house anymore to generate a fifteen hundred dollar tax bill. It just, there, there just ain't many houses under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it seems like, that you can even live in. You know, but, uh, we came up, uh, Missy McLaughlin, our treasurer, Patty, I, and one of the commissioners, figured out and, and actually took, uh, and wrote a, a bill that we were hoping to get sponsored with IAC, that for five million dollars would raise it throughout the entire state from fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars. Unfortunately, the legislature was not interested in the slightest, nor are they interested in looking at the homestead exemption to raise that up. And so the reality of the situation is, as long as residential, uh, property still keeps going up, everybody is just going to end up paying more of the load. I have had, and I guess you did an opinion, so I'm gonna do an opinion. I got my opportunity to speak in front of the Idaho Association of Counties to, uh, the Speaker of the House. And I, I said, and I believe it's true. You think about it, commercial properties and industrial properties, they don't pay property taxes, they never have. They can't, they're not gonna be in business very long if they have to. They have to pass them along, and they're gonna pass them along to the, to the consumer. And if that means that everybody is the same, it means if you gotta put a nickel on a can of corn if you're a grocery store, if you gotta raise something fifteen cents or whatever, uh, in, in these commercials, they're going to collect it, they're gonna write the check, and they're gonna get the opportunity to do the write-off. Where does Joe homeowner, where does his stop? It doesn't. He's the one that has to pay for it. I maintain that it's a lot easier to pay a little bit at a time than it is to hand somebody a five, or not five. We actually did have some, uh, three thousand dollar increases three or four years ago. And I'm just saying that that's why the homestead exemption needs to increase to put some of the burden back on commercial. I shouldn't say put it back on, level out the playing field is what I'm trying to say. It needs to level it out. But it's so far askew right now, that Joe homeowner is the one that's taking it in the.
There, there, one thing I would add is, uh, we still are waiting to find out what the homeowner's, uh, property tax relief will be, that amount. Uh, the state has to certify all the levies. And once that's done, they do a calculation with the money that they have, and then that will, um, will help a little bit. The schools, um, have already received their property tax relief. Uh, Lewiston School District was about three point nine million, it was up. Um, and so that'll help too.
Counselor Spicklemeyer. Thank you, Mayor. Patty, kind of back to the first part of your presentation. On, um, you talked about some towns have a lot of things within their own districts. What's the disadvantage of having something in its own district?
Um, I really don't think it's my place to say. I think it just depends on how, uh, the, the governing board and how they operate.
I mean, like a financial impact on, like if the city did something, is there a financial impact if a entity became its own district?
Uh, there, there could very well be, because if, if a district is created, then the levy for that function can start at the top end of the lev, levy limit. And we've had fire districts that have done that. Um, getting started is, you know, a fire district, that's, that one's tough, because their stuff's expensive. And so they started, you know, at the top of the cap of their levy limit. And so it just depends on the governing board and, and how they wanna operate.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
And then do you happen to know?
Um, and then do you happen to know what the numbers are? The property tax split out between city, county, the schools, um, kind of a vague number this year?
Um, yes, I did make a pie the other day. Um, I think, I would have to double check. I think this city is about forty-five percent of, between the city, the county, the school, and the port. The port's just a small sliver. Um, the school's a little bigger and then the county's about twenty-four percent.
As I recall.
Thereabouts. Twenty-three, twenty-four.
But again, it.
Yeah, and, and the school district's different. Uh, there's like two school districts that have, um, the ability to have a static levy. So Lewiston School District has two, two of their levies is a levy rate. It doesn't find its own self. Like I told you earlier, you've got your property tax, um, or you've got your budget and your, your value, and you come up with your levy. Well, Lewiston School District, and I think there's another school district in the southern Idaho that they have set levy rates. So when the value increases, it's just times that, and so it's more money. Um, but we have seen our local school here not, they've scaled back and has, you know, this last time they didn't take their full amount. But they could have, because, you know, when you've got half a billion dollars, that's.
A lot of money.
Yeah. Counselor Forstman.
And this example you gave us here, um, is this include everything? So the schools?
No, this is just the city of Lewiston.
Okay.
Just the city.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure I understood the numbers.
Yeah. Good question.
Counselor Klein.
I have no questions.
Thank you. Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Um, I had one other and I forgot to bring it on my taxes. Down at the bottom, it had one, I think it said highway district or something like that.
Yes, yes.
What's that?
That, people are so confused by that. Um, and I know exactly what you're talking about. And Nespers County, um, is different than, say, Idaho County. And Idaho County, Idaho County is made up of a whole bunch of little highway districts. I mean, they have like.
Clean of them.
Yeah, they have. Nespers County, it has one main highway district. And then there's a little portion of the county that's carved out that is part of South Lata Highway District. And so since the value of the whole county is not the same as our highway district, I have to separate that out into two. So, um, the road value and figuring out their levy is a smaller base because part of it's carved out for South Lata Highway District. And so it's on, you'll have Nespers County and then you'll have the road. And then, um, we also have another levying authority and that's for federal state matching. So there's, there's actually three for Nespers County.
Counselor Forstman.
Um, just, I think it was just recently that the legislators passed taking out of sales tax in order to give, uh, property tax relief. What does that look like as far as how citizens are expected to see that? Is it just that part of the levy? Is it, what does that look like?
Be similar to last year.
Uh, what, uh, talking about which one?
The home, the HTR.
Oh, the HTR, oh, the, um.
The homeowners tax.
Yeah. If you remember, was it two years ago, they had three. They had one for the schools, a certain amount of money, one for, for everybody, and then one for just the people that, uh, homeowners, that homeowner. They got rid of that, uh.
The ATR, that was.
The ATR, the everybody one, yeah.
And they just did.
Um, my understanding is that, uh, in fact, uh, it's been as late as even a month ago or so. I called the State Tax Commission to ask them, have they got a final number yet? And at that point in time, they hadn't had. Everyone seems to agree it's going to be a lot less. And I don't know how much longer this is going to continue because the State Tax Commission has even doing holdbacks now from the state agencies. Like the State Tax Commission, they said they needed three percent holdback. So I don't know whether you should count on getting any of that money next year. And I don't even know how much this year. Have you heard?
No, I, I.
Yeah, neither one of us, I don't really know. And probably won't know until they send it to the treasurer's office, I guess.
Yeah.
So the suspense.
So, so that will be incorporated in your tax bill?
In your bill.
And, and so it'll show, it'll show that on there.
Yeah.
What's the, excuse me, sorry. What's the H, you said HTR? What is that?
That, that's the homeowner's tax relief.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all I meant.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Acronym.
We talk narlinga.
Counselor Wright.
Yeah, just, just for citizens listening or that'll listen later, is it correct to say if you have concerns with the homeowner's exemption, how it's currently set up, you sure, should reach out to your representatives at the state and your legislator?
Yes, and I would, I would go a step further and leadership of the House and the Senate.
Yeah, yeah. I, I will tell you, two years ago, when the first time, I've never seen anything like it. In all the years I've been there, we saw residential property go, go up in one year, forty-two percent. Wowzer. That, that, that's never happened. There truly were tax bills that some people increased three thousand bucks. Not two three thousand, an additional three thousand. I knew I was going to catch stuff. And so I got all of the representatives and our senators, and I gave out a paper with them and said, here, call them. I can't do anything about the homestead exemption. It needs to, to be looked at. And so I handed it out. I plan to do the very same thing this year too. Because I have no idea where it's at. I'm just going to have it there so that they can, uh, folks can call. They're the only ones that can change it. I can't. If I could, it'd have been changed, but I can't do it.
So Dan?
And, go ahead.
If I owned a grocery store, am I paying less in taxes this year?
Yes.
No.
Because the levies are down and they did not, on average, commercial properties did not go up at the same amount. So when they don't go up the same amount and levies are down, the answer to that is yes. Yes. Oh, yes. Call leadership and your locals. That's the only way it's going to change.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Mayor. Um, Dan, um, when you were doing your presentation, you talked, and I may have missed it, but you said that every five years you appraise, each home got appraised every five years, but our values go up and down every year?
We, we have to look at, at each property once every five years to see if there have been changes. But we appraise annually and appraise annually based on sales of similar properties. Yeah, we have to look at it because, like I said, you know, sometimes it's hard to imagine somebody would actually do some work without a building permit. I'm sure. I'll leave that there. No, I just, I wasn't at you.
Like all eat all.
Like finish a basement? Nobody does that without a building permit. Okay.
Of course.
Course not.
Counselor Forstman.
Um, so just for hypothetical, let's say, I just want to make sure I understand this. For, for industrial, right, going up their prop, the price of them now paying more in property taxes would look like K Market's full, Shop Coke is full, we have this huge growth of, uh, building selling, industrial building selling, then you would see that go up, just like we did our homes because people were buying homes so much that that property, that went up really high due to just supply and demand. That would be the same towards an industrial.
Sure, it's what we're doing in, in your scenario. And they're building these and they're coming back. Now all of a sudden the value is shifting where? To commercial properties, lessening the burden on, or evening the, the playing field. Yes, you're exactly right. You know, I get people that once in a while say, wow, look at, look at Court Lane. You've been to Court Lane lately? There was a time where you just, you didn't go a mile outside of Court Lane and there was just nothing, all the way to Pondore or whatever. Wow, look at the commercial base those guys have. It's unreal. And so even though the residential may go up, they have so much more commercial out there to help share it that we don't have right here. It's just pushed on the poor Joe homeowner.
So, so a question for you, Dan.
Sure.
Uh, we have these big box stores here that are empty. Are they paying taxes?
Oh, yeah, but the, the answer is yes. But what happens to empty stores is they start to go bad when there's nobody in them and deteriorate. And we recognize that and, and, uh, the value adjustments were probably going to have to be made at some point in time. But yes, they're still on the tax rolls. Absolutely. Wish we could find buyers. I'm sure everyone here would agree with that.
Counselor, if there's no more questions, um, I'd like to say thank you to our guests today. We appreciate you being here. I'm, I am happy to report though, and I know that both of you know that I voted against that silly bill in two thousand and sixteen.
The horns.
Yeah, capping it, yeah. And it's just, um, the timeline is down there, you saw year after year after year, more and more and more exemptions. While we capped that, and it's, uh, there's, it's almost like you can't go back because the treasure valley is growing at a much faster pace. They have the commercial you're talking about, so they don't benefit probably as much as we would up here with the index that is fifty percent of the home value. So this is one of the challenges we have across the state is trying to set a policy that fits the state that's growing so fast in some areas and not so fast in others, so.
Get it.
Well, thank you for having us.
Absolutely.
And if you have any questions that come up later.
Yeah.
Pop in, call us. Thank you. Have a good time.
Very informative. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Counselor, if you didn't notice, Ms. Uh, Eads brought in treats again today in the back. So if you'd like to run back there, I saw Captain Reese eyeballing that, but he.
Pineapple.
Of the, the cake back there. I saw you eyeballing it.
Pineapple upside down cake.
Is that what it is? Yeah. No, you should grab a piece, but, uh, yeah, thank you Carolyn for bringing that to us. But if anybody wants any, and there's milk back there and everything else, so please help yourself. I might go grab one here in a minute. So, uh, our next item is the, uh, overview of the Lewiston Urban Renewal Agency, item B. And we have our Assistant City Planner with us here, Ms. Katie Hollingshead. Katie, welcome. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Katie Hollingshead, Assistant City Planner. And today I'm here as the Lewiston Urban Renewal Director. We are going to do a high level kind of overview of what the Urban Renewal Agency is, what they do. We're going to talk a little bit about our three open revenue allocation areas, um, what their increment, which is the tax monies that those, um, areas receive for projects is, um, what their forecasting looks like, that kind of stuff. If you have really specific questions, I'm going to ask that you email me afterwards. Um, because I am not prepared with very, very detailed information. This is high level. Um, at the end, I will show you where you can go view all of our plans, um, on the city website. Excuse me, um, and also where you can find our YouTube channel that has our recorded meetings. Um, the board does go through each of their plans and the projects listed, um, within those, um, annually. And kind of just keep track on where things are since we are usually not the leader of the plan projects. Um, we're the bank, so usually we're doing things in conjunction with other agencies, so. Okay, so Urban Renewal, um, Agency mission is to promote economic development by assisting with improvements to vacant, underutilized, or blighted land. And in doing so, the land becomes productive again, it increases in value, and the taxes it contributes to the community. So we'll talk a little bit about increment. Um, separate from increment is just that increased tax value. Um, that helps to fund things within the city and the county. So, um, agency statute, we are governed by, um, Title fifty of Idaho Code. And there are a couple of different chapters that are pursuant to us, chapter twenty-nine, chapter twenty. Um, we're also listed in the Idaho Constitution. Forty-eight cities, um, in Idaho have URAs currently. Um, our particular URA was originally formed back in the nineteen sixties. Um, and then it went dormant. Um, it was reformed as an agency in nineteen ninety-nine. Again, just that dormant until an actual plan was written, um, which was done in two thousand and five. And so then the ordinances and resolutions, um, creating that original plan. And then the separate, um, RAAs that were covered underneath that happened in two thousand and five. And so we've been rolling since then. So we are a separate and distinct legal entity. We have independent authority and we have separate bylaws. So council's role when it comes to the URI. Um, the council appoints board members. Um, when we do open a new revenue allocation area, the council approves the boundaries of those areas. Um, so usually it's a map with a certain, um, amount of land. Um, we are limited with how much of the city's total taxable value that we can roll into, um, our RAAs. And you guys also approve our RAA plans and the terms of them. And we have board member representation from the council. So right now Counselor Kleberg, um, is my council representative. So our current URA board and staff, um, we do have an open member-at-large seat. So if you know anybody who's interested in joining the board, um, I would invite them to either contact myself or the city clerk to get that application. We would love to have a full board. Um, currently, Sheila Bond is our chair. She is a member-at-large. Tim Switzer is our vice chair. He is also a member-at-large. Butch Alfred, um, is a Valley Vision member. Doug Havens is our Nespers County member. Mr. Kleberg, as I said before, is our counselor. Um, and Joe Anderson is our port representative. For staff, you have myself. Um, our legal counsel is Thad O'Sullivan. And then our finance staff with the city prepares our financial statements, um, balances our checkbooks, um, does our money transfers to the state treasurer pool, um, those sorts of things for us. So what can URAs do? So we can construct or reconstruct streets, utilities, parks, recreation facilities, off-street parking, public facilities, public buildings, and other sorts of improvements that fall under kind of that category. Um, we can acquire and dispose of property or buildings. And we can improve, renovate, clear, and prepare, um, properties for redevelopment. And that can be for properties or for buildings. Um, you may remember in the last couple of years, there had been quite a bit of talk about, um, the Twin City Food Site and whether or not, um, the purchase of that building fell under our downtown plan and projects. Um, and if there had been opportunity, um, there for us to partner with that kind of thing because that is something that the URI can do, um, as long as it is covered within the projects listed in a plan. Um, so, um, we can also invest and borrow money. We can issue bonds. We can accept loans and grants. And then we work cooperatively with other public entities. So, um, in particular, um, the city, we do a lot of projects with the city. And then like Lewiston Old George Irrigation District, um, we have a reimbursement agreement on one of our RAAs currently. So how are we funded? So revenue, revenue allocation financing is also known as tax increment financing, so TIF. Um, so this is covered in, again, that Title fifty, chapter twenty-nine. So when a revenue allocation area is, um, developed, the tax base is set. And so then whatever increase in that tax base value, um, from that set amount, that's what that increment is. So you'll have your set amount. Um, your value increases hopefully because of the projects that are being done in that area. Um, because they improve the area, they encourage property owners to sell or divide or to build or whatever it is. Um, and you see that value increase. And so this portion here is the part that the URI gets funneled to pay for those types of improvements. And then that base value stays steady and that still monies that the city, county, um, port and school district would still receive. So it's that revenue derived from the increase in property value. It does not increase property taxes. It just reallocates where those tax revenues go. And it's all based on that increase. So if there was no increase, there would not be any increment coming in. So, um, these are, so when a plan is done, um, usually part of that is kind of a projection of how much increment, um, it is estimated based on the value, um, at the time the revenue allocation area is developed. And then what we think might happen. And then what we think might happen if improvements are done. So those would be the projects that are identified in the plan. Um, so that's forecasted kind of out as an estimate of what we think that we might be able to collect to pay for projects over the life of the 20-year plan. So, um, for this meeting, I reestimated, basically, I did some new forecasting, um, showing where, where we're going, right? So we have three revenue allocation areas that are currently open. Our East Orchard Sewer, our Brighton, and our Downtown. So number five, six, and seven. Um, so for East Orchard Sewer, and this one's a little complicated because we've spent money in this area installing sewer lines. So, um, this doesn't account for the monies we have already spent doing those trunk line projects. And we're on our third trunk line project right now. So increment to date, um, so this is what my bank balance is right now, is $1,790,294. Um, 1.49 of that is contractually obligated. Um, and that's our, uh, third phase of sewer installation. It's about 3,200, um, linear feet of sewer that is going in. Um, part of it was done this summer. The next three segments are in process right now with a estimated completion date in December. Um, so our annual increment currently is $690,000 a year. And that's based on our 2025 estimate, um, from, um, Mr. Anderson and Mrs. Weeks. And then our estimated increment, and this is if I did not spend any more money, um, would be, and well, if I did not spend any more money on projects. So this takes into account my administrative expenses. And then we do have a bond that paid for the original trunk line as part of this project. So we have a bond payment that we make every year. Um, so at the close of this revenue allocation area, which is 2037, we would have $8.2 million, give or take, sitting in the bank. Um, so that's just kind of the breakdown. And like I said, um, it looks like those numbers are kind of low because they don't take into account the monies we've already spent doing Phase 1 and Phase 2 of sewer installation. So then our Brighton, um, Avenue area, um, increment to date, we have just over $2 million, um, sitting in the bank. Our annual increment is $545,000, again, based on our 2025 estimate from the county. Um, estimated increment at the term of this revenue allocation area, which is 2038, will be just over $9.1 million. Um, projects identified in that plan are the rebuild of Brighton, um, from 4th to 7th, um, initially, and then from 7th to 10th also. Actually, I think it's 7th all the way to Thane. Um, that's called on the project, sorry. We'll look at maps. Um, and then our Downtown Revenue Allocation Area, um, so this, um, one, as you just heard from the folks from the county, um, this one, you really see the difference in what kind of taxes commercial, um, brings in versus residential. Um, because originally, when this revenue allocation area was developed, that was before the switch happened at the legislative level. Um, and the estimate had been much higher. Um, but because of that change at the legislative, legislative level, um, kind of changing the balance between commercial properties and residential properties, it's gonna be lower than originally estimated. So our increment to date, this is our newest one, so it has not been open that long, is $628,000 and some change. Our annual increment is about $310,000, again, based on that 2025 estimate. And our estimated increment at close of 2041 is just over $5.2 million. Those are some numbers. So then how are our projects paid for? These are all ways that you can pay for them based on URA law. So you can do pay-as-you-go. You can develop a reimbursement. That's when you would work with a private developer, where they would actually do the installation of whatever utility or improvement. Um, and the URA would pay them back, um, as increment came in. Um, owner participation agreements, which are kind of similar to that development reimbursement. Um, conventional bank loans, which pending may or may not be available, um, for our particular uses. Bonds, which like I mentioned before, we do have an outstanding bond for our East Orchard Sewer Revenue Allocation Area. And then participation policies. We, for the most part, have done bonds and then pay as you go. Um, so, uh, revenue allocation areas, so, um, like I said, you're only allowed to do a certain percentage of the total assessed value. So 10% of the city's current assessed value can be included in revenue allocation areas. Um, so currently, we're in 6.25% with the three that we have open. Um, and then like the process of, um, developing a new RAA. So if a new RAA, um, if the board wanted to develop a new RAA, um, we would determine blight and the need for improvements. We would determine boundaries for the area. We would make sure that we're under that 10% total for all of our RAAs combined. Um, and then we would work with legal to develop that resolution. Um, city council would then approve that resolution that creates that boundary, that map. Um, the URA board would then create a plan, and that would include the different projects that are identified to, um, remove the blight, um, or do whatever else that the plan identifies is the goal. That plan then goes in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission for review. They would either recommend approval or denial to council. Um, and then that would come in front of you for approval or denial of the plan. So that's how a new one is set up. Um, they're done for a 20-year duration. They could be done for less, um, but 20 years is basically the max. So our previous RAAs, um, so we've had four, um, that we've completed projects and closed out. So we had our North Lewiston, so that was called number one. That one rebuilt 18th Street North, um, replaced water lines, added hydrants. That one was closed out in 2016. Our Nez Perce Terrace RAA was number two. Um, that completed the road and utility extension into the port properties, which are at the top of Juniper, um, and completed the Nez Perce Drive Extension. That one was closed out in 2017. Um, our previous Downtown RAA, um, was number three. That one completed, um, the rebuild of First and Fifth Streets, um, did some parking studies, worked on some flood control, um, and some other downtown infrastructure improvements. That one was closed in 2020. Um, and then our Main East Main, um, which was number four. Um, that installed new water lines and storm lines through, um, South and through the US 12, 21st Street, um, intersection. So our big, beautiful, new intersection, um, Urban Renewal Agency helped with kind of the underground parts of that. And that one, we closed out last year. So, um, these are the three that are still open. So like I said, East Orchard Sewer is number five. Brighton is number six. And our Downtown is number seven. Um, so that's a new Downtown one. Um, so this gives you kind of our base year. So East Orchard Sewer was opened in 2017. It closes out in 2037. Um, gives you your resolution numbers and your ordinance numbers. Um, projects in that plan are the expansion of sewer trunk, um, main in the East Orchards. Um, and it also identified a possible lift station. Currently, the board has been, um, very concentrated on just adding new sewer to where there is not sewer so that homeowners can connect and get off of their septic systems. So Phase 1 installed just over 9,000 linear feet of sewer main pipe. Um, and then, uh, just over 2,000 feet of service pipe. So that's the, the lateral connection. So you have a main line, and then you have lateral connections that come off of that to, um, service homes. 66 sewer taps, um, were done with that project. And so those were homeowners that switched over. Um, and then we were also able to pay for an additional 3.5, uh, blocks of additional sewer main to be designed. Um, so we identify things by segments, and all of our segments have a number. Um, and so within, you'll see on the next slide, the map within our, um, area, we have mapped out all the segments that, um, don't have sewer. And so all of those folks are on a septic system of some sort. Then our Phase 2 was done a couple of years later. And that phase did, um, 640 feet of sewer main pipe and 13 sewer taps. And then Phase 3, like I said, is, um, in construction currently. Um, and that's just over 3,200, um, feet of sewer main pipe. Then our Brighton, number six. Um, so the projects that are listed in that plan are street widening, um, with curb gutter sidewalks, um, a water system upgrade, and that would be in conjunction with Lloyd, and then sanitary sewer, um, system upgrades also. So to date for that one, we have only paid for, um, the matching funds for some road design work from 4th to 7th. And we have entered into a reimbursement agreement with Lloyd that says that we would pay for half of, um, the water infrastructure upgrades. Because of the size of this project, um, we really just have to wait for enough increment to accrue, um, so that we can partner with either Lloyd or the city, um, to be able to move forward with projects. And then Downtown, number seven, this is our newest one. So it was opened in '21, um, after the original Downtown was closed in '20. Um, so this one calls out water system upgrades, wastewater system upgrades, um, pedestrian stairs leaking, Pioneer Park and New Sixth Street, um, wayfinding, which is signage, um, parking lots, parking garages, and then flood control, so storm water system. We have not done any, um, projects to date for this one. Again, it's fairly new. We don't have a lot of money in the bank for this one yet. Um, and again, this would be something where we would be looking to probably partner with the city, um, to pay for these upgrades. Um, I'm hoping that after the November ballot, um, we might be able to come back and have some conversations about how we might, uh, partner if that bond is passed. So then looking at maps, like I said, everything's a map. Um, so these are our revenue allocation area, um, maps. So this is my East Orchards. These are the boundaries of it outlined in blue. Um, this weird little box here is a, um, city OSD, um, sewer system that's like, doesn't touch the rest of their sewer system. I don't know how that works, but that's what that is. Um, so, uh, these are our boundaries for that as a total. And then, like I said, these are all my segments. So the yellow line is all of the sewer that has been, um, installed as part of the URAs project. So this main line did this little zigzag here, went down to Powers. No, went down to, this is Cedar. So this is Grell, went down to Grell, turned the corner, went down to Powers, and came out here to the boundary of, um, 22nd and Powers where the Skyview Estates subdivision is. And then Skyview Estates has picked that up and carried it, um, to service their, um, subdivision. And this section up here, this is number seven. So this one was completed this summer. Um, the three segments over here, that's 17, 18, and 19, those are the ones that are currently in construction along 20th. And then you can see we have, you know, orange and other colors identified. And so those are segments that have not, um, been completed yet or been designed. That's kind of where we stand now. This is Brighton. So this is Brighton's map. So it starts over here at 4th, goes all the way to Thane. Does a little zigzaggy along parcel lines, um, as it goes through. And then, like I said, when I read out the thing, main thing is street widening with curb gutter sidewalk, water system upgrades, sanitary sewer upgrades. And then our Downtown. Again, outlined in yellow are my boundaries. And again, water system upgrades, wastewater system upgrades, pedestrian stairs, wayfinding, parking lots, parking garages, flood control. Those are all the things, all the projects that are identified that the URA could possibly spend money on. So what's next for us? So like I said earlier, um, the board does review projects pretty regularly. Um, so last month, um, we reviewed our Brighton plan, went through the projects, kind of had a discussion, um, with some representatives from Public Works. Um, road design is nearly, nearly complete. So the city may or may not come back to us at a later date, um, to see about doing other design work or, you know, as we kind of save increment, we can see what next steps are gonna be. East Orchard Sewer, um, like I said, Phase 3 is under construction. Um, it is on our October agenda. So our meeting is next Tuesday. Um, and we'll be talking about the projects listed in there, um, where our bond sits, um, bond payments. If the board wants to look at making additional bond payments on principle next year, we've done that in the past, um, in between projects. And then Downtown, um, is listed for our November agenda, um, to again, discuss the plan, review the projects. Um, and that meeting will be, um, a special meeting because, um, our regular meeting is on Veterans Day. And of course, we're closed on Veterans Day. So we'll be meeting on the 13th, which will be following, um, the bond election. So hopefully, we will have, uh, good results from the bond election. And, um, that'll be a more robust conversation about moving things forward. And then finally, um, just some resources for the council. Our regular meetings are the second Tuesday of each month at noon. We meet in the back conference room at City Hall, um, with few exceptions. Um, like I said, November is a special meeting on the 13th because our regular meeting falls on a holiday. Um, our website is linked with the City of Lewiston's website. Idaho Code is also, um, linked on there on our page. And then you can watch our meetings on the YouTube channel.
Counselor, some question. Counselor Spectamarc.
Mayor, so Katie, I didn't follow it, how you determine how much money can be allocated to each project annually?
Oh, like how much money we get in?
Yeah, how much, like, uh, for instance, the Brighton one annually is 545.
Oh, that information comes from the tax collectors. So we don't, I don't make that decision. Like, I'm given information from them and deposits are made from the county to the URA. So that's what that is. That's that increment number for each one. And they do all of that lovely calculation for me.
Counselor Wright?
Yeah. Is there, is there some, uh, past performance data I could access around after the, the RAA is finished? What kind of growth do we see in that area on a tax basis?
I would believe that that would be a question for Nez Perce County, um, because they're the ones that ultimately, I mean, they talked about, you know, the, um, what those assessed values are and what that growth looks like. Um, I can show usually during, um, we get what's called a September Values worksheet from the county. Um, and it shows kind of the difference each year. Um, but I don't get that once an RAA is closed. Um, so I don't know how it continues to grow afterwards. Um, you know, what its, um, continued benefit is from the projects that have occurred in each one. But I'm sure that the county could probably tell you. Cause they could, they could, it would be easy to see what year, you could ask for, um, a September Values worksheet for whatever year it closed at, and you could see what it was listed as. And then you could be like, can you give me the current one and show me where like the corresponding number would be? And I think that that would give you kind of a good idea of what that growth has looked like.
Okay. Uh, just one more really quick on the same kind of topic. When you're setting up an RAA, do you use, does the group set goals around, we, we wanna see this kind of growth? We're doing these things. One of our goals is we want 5% growth in business in this area. Or how does that kind of work with the goals?
That's not usually how the projects work. It's usually identifying like, um, a lack, right? So, um, for East Orchard Sewer, for example, there's not sewer, right? So that was kind of the determination. And so if you look at that plan, it lists our goals is to provide sewer within so many feet of so many properties, yada, 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 or within this many, um, square blocks or whatever. Um, and so the goals are usually more that way. And they'll, they'll describe on like a, kind of a broader base. Um, if this is available, we can see that something else could happen. So for East Orchard Sewer, if sewer is available, that reduces your lot size and makes, um, it easier for you to subdivide your property because you don't need, um, the required space that like a septic system requires based on public health and DEQ requirements. But we wouldn't probably, we don't put in, um, plans really specific. We project this many people are gonna switch over because you can't really put a number. You can say what you hope will happen because you've provided this, right? But I can't make a homeowner subdivide their property. I can't make them build more duplexes, right? Like, that's not how that works. Um, but the idea behind those plans are to identify a blight, um, identify something that is stopping development or redevelopment of properties, and then to find a solution. So like East Orchards, the solution is to put sewer lines in. Um, blight for Downtown. Blight for downtown, and this tags along with the bond. The water system through downtown is lacking. And so that prevents redevelopment of buildings in the downtown area because there's not enough hydrants, they can't get the water pressure, you know, those sorts of things. So that's the identified problem. So the solution is let's start accruing increment so that we can pay for new water lines. And so it's more that kind of thing. And then the hope is that because you've installed the improvement, that then the development can happen because the improvement is now there. And that's not an individual person or an individual developer's responsibility to do this very large thing in order for them to, you know, do what they want with their property.
Katie, thank you.
I'll ask another one.
Counselor Wright.
I can?
Knock yourself out.
Wait, I find it here. Yeah, coordination with other groups. Do you coordinate with Valley Vision or Chamber of Commerce on the discussion of what are our goals? What do we want to try and achieve in an area?
So yes, with Valley Vision, we have a board member that's assigned to us from Valley Vision. And so they're able to bring information from the Valley Vision meetings. You know, the CEO of Valley Vision frequently attends our meetings to offer ideas or insights. Once a plan and an RAA is set, though, you can't change it. Like, it is what it is, and you cannot mend that situation. So I would say, yes, if we were going to form a new RAA, that would be something that we would do is we would, because we would be trying to identify blight or a lack of something somewhere. We would probably be visiting with the city, with the other jurisdictions, with school district. We would want to reach out to all those different bodies and kind of identify, what are the things that you know about that are problematic in this area? We've identified this area. We need to make sure that we're concentrating on the right things within the area when we go to write this plan and put projects in it. So at the creation of an RAA, would be probably where we do the most outreach and trying to get the most feedback. I would say as the board just kind of works through projects and the process itself, you know, we have that representative from Valley Vision, we have one from the county, we have one from the city, we have one from the port. And then we have those at-large members who can kind of just bring a perspective of citizens at large. And so there's opportunities for kind of just discussion and education about what's going on and what we hope to see happen because of improvements that are being made. But I think you would more so be looking for that input at the beginning as you create one.
Thanks.
Counselor Porchman.
So the RAA increment projects with the numbers, is that basically your financial update? Like, that's what you have in the bank allocated?
Yes, yeah, so each one, so that's what I have in the bank, and then what I'm getting annually from increment. And then we also get a small amount. We do invest our money in the state treasurer pools. We do get a small amount in interest from them. And then we do have two other banks that we utilize, and we do get small amounts of interest from them. And so there's other little bits of money that rolls in. But most of the funds are that increment that I showed on that slide, yes. And our annual report is on our page. You can go through that whole bad boy. It has a lot more details, obviously, about expenses, you know, what's going out, what's coming in, that kind of stuff.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
And counsel, I'm going to show a lack of professionalism up here. And I'm going back to that upside-down pineapple cake and I'm going to come back because I didn't get lunch today at all. Well, Chief Wrightmeyer.
I'll do it too. Make you not feel weird.
It's the neighborly thing to do, and anybody's welcome to have it.
She spends a lot of time in there.
I didn't have lunch either.
Think about it.
Um, you don't have to wait on me. I appreciate it. My fault, you know.
Sure is. I always wanted to say thank you.
I try to bring the milk home to my kids, and they're like, what is this? Where's all the fat and the sugar? It's like, it's like 2%, and I don't like it. Okay. Don't do that again.
Noel's going to go back and tell everybody that we always have cake and milk and all that kind of stuff at our meetings. Maybe there's something under there.
Not the 2%? Oh, my son's like, give me the red, the full, full of fat.
Porchman, you and I are always not shy about it. We just cook it and food.
I know. Well, she puts a lot of energy into it. Why not, you know? Otherwise, I have to try to eat it when I get in the car. I go back to the. Does it usually get eaten when you guys take it back?
Are you ready, chief?
Anytime you want.
Okay, well, welcome. Please introduce yourself for the record. And the floor is yours. Thank you, chief.
Welcome. Thank you, counsel and candidates. Appreciate you all being here. Greg Wrightmeyer, Fire Chief for City Lewiston. I hate to continue the school session you guys have had today, but that's what we're going to do. And I'm going to try to really stay at that high level as Mrs. Hollingshead indicated. I'll have my contact information for you. And specific questions, we can really dive into one-on-one to make sure if there's more technical stuff that you'd like to know about, we can get that for you. And also, Councilwoman Klein there on Zoom. There we go. So the plan of today, what we're going to just try to do is get a common understanding of what's going on in our EMS system, the history and the structure of it, so that everybody's, can kind of start at the same place, same definitions. A review of our department modeling, our staff model for, our model, our staffing model for that so that we can look at that and be able to answer questions about that. Talk about the EMS revenues that we see from our contracts and how that offsets the service costs that we have for the citizens. Review the contract calculation method that we had for you with the Nez Perce County EMS contract you recently approved. And then maybe allude a little bit to some future discussions if you want to discuss some of the roadmap of the future and where we would go. I'd like to get your input. And one of the things that's not today is a strategic planning workshop. So that's a whole nother thing that gets into a way different level. And like I said, I'm happy to have one-on-one discussions with you about that information. So a little bit of the history of the valley system. In the early years, as EMS came, it dates all the way back to Napoleonic times and then into New York City with actually some of the early historical names that you hear of Florence Nightingale and things like that is how EMS started. And it started with horse-drawn carriages. And it started with, in the West, with tow truck companies and mortuaries because they would sometimes go to pick a body up, and it wouldn't be expired. So they'd take them to the hospital, and taxi companies. And so in 1961, Lewiston Fire Department started running an ambulance service here in the valley out of their fire departments. And as that progressed into the 70s and in the late 1968, the White Paper was written, and you'll hear about that, talked about that. It was the death and dying in America. And it was really a paper about our interstate highway system and the fact that people were dying in car wrecks, and we didn't have anything to do but send the mortuary or the tow truck company out to these car wrecks. And that started, if you'll remember, the Johnny and Roy in the early 70s, the TV show of emergency. And that portrayed the system that had been developed in Los Angeles County. They were the third county, actually, to get into the business after Florida and also Seattle area got into this first EMS 4A. So you fast forward into the 70s and 80s here in the valley, and we started getting EMTs licensed instead of just advanced first aid people. And we started having what we called Quick Response Units or QRUs. And these different services were provided by volunteers and paid folks throughout Nez Person and Assotin County. Moving on into the next decade there in the 90s, the first paramedic program was actually hosted here in 1993. Now, if you can go back and kind of look at that, we're a decade late in Lewiston to getting paramedics out in our, for our community. And so, and you also look at it and you say, wow, that wasn't that long ago. I remember 93, and that was, you know, just hasn't been that long. And so when we think of the maturity of a system, you know, it's not like our downtown water system that, you know, we have wooden water mains in places. Those have been in place since the 1800s. And so this is, you know, we're babies in the big scope of thing. Service was provided in, later in the late 2000s over. And I'm going to put a preface, an asterisk here. This is how I've heard some of this stuff. I've talked to a lot of people. They've told me the stories. I've read previous council minutes for meetings, read different studies and newspaper articles. So there's, I have to allow that. Somebody else out there is going to remember this a little differently than I'm presenting it today. But late 2000s there, in Assotin County, they started collecting some EMS taxes for an EMS district. And they were using that to help fund the QRU there in Clarkston. And then, and right after 2010 in that timeframe there, '09 to '11 is when some system changes happened within the LC Valley. And Clarkston Fire Department converted that to an actual transporting unit. And then at that point in time, the county floated those tax dollars to the fire district, who then began partnering with Lewiston to continue providing services outside the two square miles of the city. Because that's all that Clarkston unit was doing at the time. And so we kind of, that goes forward. In 2011, there's a big study done, and I included that in your packets. I didn't expect you to read it all, but I wanted you to have access to it so that you can look through. The executive summary, I think, the first 10 pages is pretty telling about the relationships that were going on at the time, the recommendations that were made. And I can tell you, out of the eight recommendations made in that report, one of them had been completed. And that's in that last 15 years. So we didn't go very far. I can also tell you that that report cost the valley agencies, all shared in that, $50,000. And that is in 2011 money. So a pretty expensive report. And unfortunately, the political will and the relationships between the agencies didn't exist back then to really be able to make those things come to fruition. So we fast forward throughout that decade and coming into COVID, a continued history of the cost sharing between the different agencies as previous fire chiefs of Lewiston started going and saying, hey, we can't survive on transport revenue only. People are using 911 more, and we're going out there more. And the citizens of the city can't continue to shoulder that. And our partners agreed with us, and they started contributing. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as we go along. And then you get to today's system. It's a regionalized system. We have good working relationships between the agencies that provide the service. The fire chiefs get along. The folks are, you know, the crews themselves work well together. And the political bodies are all amicable and deal with each other well in a business mode. When we go to our resource deployment here just in Lewiston, we follow the National Fire Protection Association 1710 standard. And what that standard reads is that for an effective response force, they have three different tiers, for low risk, a medium risk, and a high risk. Well, a high risk is for a high-rise building. So 43 people going to an incident really isn't the system we're designed for. The medium risk, that's apartment complexes, the taxpayers downstairs or downtown and stuff. And those, ideally, you need to have 28 people on scene for those incidents. And that's a pretty big lift for an area. But it's an incredibly small risk and at a small frequency. So what we really targeted our system off of is that low risk. And these 16 people, if you go into the standard, it identifies how many people you need to be laddering the building, how many people extending hoses, how many people doing search and rescue, how many people being the incident commanders. And it breaks down. Everybody has a task, and they've done some pretty good studies to look at how long it takes and whether the right number of people on an engine is three, four, five, six. They've done all that kind of work. Where we've settled in here in our system, very efficient and effective, a good balance of both with the 16 people. Two of those people are stationed at the Assotin County Fire District. And there's a couple of reasons of how that got to be. But what that really does is it gives us a presence to cover southwest Lewiston, the Elks Division and out there, better than we can cover it from our other fire stations. So as the partnership grew over the years through the 20 teens and that decade before where we're at now, that really gave us a better point of presence to serve our citizens. So you look at our resource deployment area there, you kind of see a bigger map. But basically, what you're looking at there is Assotin County and most of Nez Perce County, some of South Whitman County. If you kind of take the top of that jiggy jog there in Nez Perce County and draw it straight across, that Julieta Kendrick area that kind of gets served by Genesee and JK ambulance. And then the very small, where Pex at, that little nub out there, Clearwater County actually responds to a portion of that. But the rest of that area is we respond to minus the Clarkston, the two square miles of Clarkston. So we zoom in on that. You see there's five fire station locations, the three Lewiston city locations, the Assotin County Fire District, and then also the city of Clarkston. The blue dots represent those staffed fire stations where there is a paramedic unit 24/7, 365 days a year. The blue-lined areas, those are areas where we have other ambulances that are available. They're BLS or ALS, depending on the staffing of the day. And they're not fully staffed. They're staffed with volunteers or flex-staffed out of one of our fire engines. But it gives us a little bit extra surge capacity when we need it in the system. Financial partnerships, I have kind of given you a little bit of background, but for the past 15 years, we've had these different agreements in place. And that purpose of those was to cost share, to try to get some of the money back for the city of Lewiston was not bearing all this burden. Looking back at the whole financial fiscal year that we have numbers for is 24. We're looking at 877 and change there that we brought in through our service contracts. That's 44% of the revenue that we bring in. So the other 66% of that, or 56% of that comes from our transport fees. Those initial cost modelings back in, you know, late 2000s, early 2010s, that was really done on some estimates. The levy that existed already, that was the beginning. You know, Assotin County Fire District said, well, here, we collect this much money with this help. And then slowly, people kind of built on that. And people did a lot of math with different numbers. Really, in 2011, there was some objectivity in that standard where they did some, that company that was hired, they did some research, and they looked at the operations and your personnel costs and your facilities costs, and they started breaking that out. And they really came up, when you see the numbers they came up with in that study, is kind of where our contracts have been at. So I see a pretty good correlation there. I'd say it's, that's definitely a, it's inferred. It's not a direct proof that that's where that came from. But I can see the correlation. The interesting thing about the 2011 study is it, a couple of the numbers in there, they looked at the 2010 census, and they said there was 58,000 people in the service area. And they said, boy, by 2030, that's going to be 96,000. I can tell you, at 20- can tell you, at 2020, fifty-eight became sixty-six. So I don't think we're on track for the ninety-six thousand that that study saw. So there's some limitations to where their projection numbers were that didn't necessarily fit the valley. On the same token, they said by 2030, we would have more than eighty-five thousand calls for EMS service. And we crested that a couple of years ago. So we're running more calls to fewer people than the study had anticipated. I don't think that the study had anticipated perhaps our demographics and the reliance of people to use nine-one-one as their primary healthcare system without the healthcare system being robust enough to provide them all of their services. In 2018, Washington State adopted the ground emergency medical transport legislation that was available. This is a federal program where ambulance providers, whether it be a public EMS provider or a fire department EMS provider, but it had to be public, you could come back to the government and say, look, we spent this much money on Medicaid patient transports, only Medicaid, and they're acknowledging, yeah, our contracted rates and what we pay you aren't enough. And so we'll do the math and basically get you your tax return back. It's very much like doing your taxes. You stuff a whole bunch of information into spreadsheets, and a bunch of federal rules are looked at, and allowances and disallowances, and then it gets fed into the machine, and you get some money back from that. That process, early on, in 2019 is when it started, they did the first two years, and then we did that in-house at the fire department. And the money was good. We were seeing big dollars, two, three, four hundred thousand dollars coming in a year. In 2022, when Chief Michael Bus left, he told me, he said, chief, hire this out. You do not want this headache. This is too hard to figure out. I'm not sure it's ever been done exactly like it was supposed to do. Well, it just so happened that the federal government also came to Washington State and said, hey, we haven't seen your audits. Now, you know, COVID had been going on, government shutdowns and everything. And so Washington State went gulp, and they hired a federal, a company that's a nationwide company called Myers and Stoffer, and they came in and they did the audit. And so the first thing I inherited was auditing our 2022 records. And it wasn't pretty. And fortunately, they found that throughout the state, and the Department of Health just kind of let that go. And last July, when they didn't come back asking for money, I kind of breathed a sigh of relief, and I was happy that we didn't have to take care of that. What we did learn, though, is we learned through hiring a company, we use a company called PCG, and they are essentially an accounting firm, and they, what they do for us is prepare our paperwork, they prepare our taxes. And then they also stand with us and handle all the audit procedures, because lo and behold, Washington State figured out, you actually have to do an audit every year. So now what we have is we have a triple-check system, PCG does all their internal audits, they submit it to the Department of Health, and the Department of Health goes through it all and makes sure all your paperwork and everything's right. And then Myers and Stoffer does this final audit process. And we go through that for each one of our fiscal years. What I feel very good about is after fiscal twenty-three and on now, is we have a very objective outside view of what it costs us to do for our transports. Now, granted, that's Medicaid, so they're certainly not going to be gushing and giving us an overly rosy view, and we certainly are able to recover more money than that from private insurance companies than you can from Medicaid or Medicare. But that's just kind of the medical insurance world that we all live in. Using these calculations is how I came to the new system, when Mayor and I sat down and worked with that, and we worked with the county commissioners. That's how we negotiated the new county contract. And we're seeing roughly about a hundred and eighty thousand dollar increase in that one year. Now, that being said, the county runs six, seven hundred calls out to the county in a year. So it's, you know, if we're looking at another contract where maybe somebody has twenty-five calls a year, fifty calls a year, we're obviously not going to see a hundred and eighty thousand dollars from everybody. But it was a good shot in the arm to our budget and to our, to the general fund this year for revenue planning out for FY twenty-six. So when we look at this financial partnership and how this has been going, we've seen an improvement history over the last two decades. We've gotten better and better cost sharing and just, one, us figuring out where we should be, us giving better advice to the people that we contract with and our partners, and where they should project and what they should expect. And then the 2011 study kind of looked at our system. I think there's some value in there. A lot of those recommendations are still valuable if we wanted to build a more robust kind of valley-wide system instead of just isolated individual agencies. A great question was asked earlier about districting, and what is the benefit to that? Well, sometimes the benefit to that is stabilization of the tax base across the whole area, so everybody's paying the same. But sometimes, one of the downsides is you're duplicating leadership, you're duplicating a finance department, a facilities department, a fleet department. And so there can be some additional costs in there. And that's a big question for a strategic planning group to meet over a period of time and kind of figure out the golden answer, what's best. It's kind of hard to just shoot from the hip on that. We have the GMT data, I believe we, I feel good about our data now that we're accurately representing our needs and where we're at. One of the things that several of our contract partners deal with is EMS levy cycles. So as we're continuing to improve, we're also going from here to here. Not everybody can write that check tomorrow. And so I think that that's how we kind of have to work through that process of what does that look like so that it's the best for everybody. And then, like I mentioned, if we want to do a system evaluation, if that's a roadmap for the future, I think that that's a, it's a great discussion to have with the city councils of our service area, also with the county commissioners of the two counties, and the leadership in the departments, to say, hey, what is best? What's going to be the best thing for all of our citizens, and frankly, all of us as we travel to the different areas? Because unfortunately, a car wreck doesn't know a boundary, right? You know, I travel, I travel a lot of the roads and the waterways. So some of our current and upcoming contracts, you just did the Nez Perce County agreement. On the twenty-seventh of October, you'll see the Assotin County Rural EMS District contract, and that is the contract that covers really Anatone and the far unincorporated areas. That's why it's called the Rural EMS District. And that's a contract with Assotin County as a political entity. Then we have the Assotin County Fire District contract, and that's a different agency, and that's more of a partnership than just a service contract. There's some give and take and exchange of services there. Whitman County will be next year, but I'm already, you know, learning what I've learned, I'm already engaging them so we can get ahead of their political cycle. So if they need to look at our costs and where we're at and want to continue service, that they can get their EMS levy language on the ballot and get it in in time that we can get them moving forward. And then those contracts, we're building those out based on the structured cost formula that we used for Nez Perce County. So everybody sees the same thing. It's the same numbers catered to that specific agency of how many, how many calls are we running there, how many of them are extrication calls, and how much time we spend out of service in that area. And then, again, the EMS levy funding impact, we have to kind of take that. So I think, you know, a lot of us, sometimes you hear a lot of things, you kind of do get to that, well, what's the benefit for me? What's in it for me? What's in it for the citizens that I've sworn to protect here in the city? And so one of the things that's in it for us is that Washington State revenue, so just Washington alone, that's six hundred thousand dollars in our contracts, plus our transportation fees. So it pencils out about eight seventy-five for fiscal twenty-four. And so that's a significant amount of revenue that if that went away, we'd have to figure out how to figure, put that back into our system. Our city residents get to know there's an ALS system no matter where they go. If they're shopping inside or outside the city, across the river, if they're recreating and they call nine-one-one, they're going to get services and paramedic services to where they're at. It offsets our minimum staffing, so we talked about minimum staffing being sixteen people. That doesn't change if we move that unit. Before the unit was in Assotin County Fire District One in their station, it was at the downtown station. So we still need those people, we still need those three transport units for our system. It's just that right now, we're getting an offset to that cost. And then we also get that better response time over to southeast Lewiston, to those several hundred homes that are in that area there. The cost to us, what does it cost us? It costs us in that there's, we're providing service to other areas. So there's going to be simultaneous calls. And I would say on average, about once a week, we have what we call no medic unit available. So our pagers all go off on general alarm, and that means that all the medic units are already on calls, and we don't have a medic unit available. So those, the things that we do to kind of adjust for that is we'll put low acuity calls, like interfacility transports, taking somebody to a doctor's office, we put that on hold, and we'll go take the nine-one-one call. We can also utilize, one of the partnerships that we have with the Assotin County Fire District One is they are actually licensed to provide care in Idaho. So they're the only other agency in this valley that can provide care in Idaho. So they can come over and take a call for us and take somebody to the hospital if they need to. The Chief Lucas and I, the reason we wear things, carry gloves with us all the time, we're still licensed DMTs and paramedics. And so we'll jump in a unit, we just go next door to the admin there, and we get the extra medic unit, and we go on the call. So we handle that simultaneous calls. It does happen, that is a cost to the residents. Equipment, it's a wear and tear in our equipment. We would still need the same number of ambulances, the same reserve fleet that we had. And so, but there's some wear and tear. We would certainly be driving fewer miles, and so things might last a little bit longer. And then costs of goods, you know, certainly some of the medical supplies, we typically bill for those and get reimbursed. But I think if I'm being critical, it's costing us some Band-Aids and some IV needles and things like that to provide service over in Assotin County. So coming to the conclusion for my presentation today is just some open Q and A, answer questions. I'd really like to, you saw my goals there, is understand what your needs are as I'm preparing these contracts to come to you in the next week, that we're making sure that we're addressing needs. I would like to, anybody that has questions or wants to know more about the system or something else, have some one-on-one follow-ups after this, and I'll leave you with my cell phone number. And please, call me, I'll meet you somewhere, we can have a cup of coffee, I'll buy. I'm not making a political contribution or anything, we'll make sure we're all up and above, and we're not violating any open meeting laws or anything, but I've been assured I can talk to one of you one-on-one just fine, we don't break any rules. And then we'll have those contracts of the professional services agreement for the rural district, because that is just strictly a, we'll charge you this much per call. And then the Fire District One, which is more of that partnership agreement, like I said, they give us a place to have a unit housed, bedroom facility, showers, all of the things that we need to have a fire station without us having to pay for a fire station. They also pay us a base contract rate just to be there. And so we got to kind of peel that out and present that to you. And then any discussions you want to have about our future and where we're going, and where you'd like to see us going, Council Enforcement gets to sit on MSAC, but, or MSAB Committee, sorry, there's MSAC, M-Save and MSAB. But she sits on MSAB, and she gets some exposure to this, but it's quarterly. And so she's, and we don't go into super, you know, big deep dives in that about things. So if you want to do a deep dive, please get ahold of me, and we'll deep dive something, and I'll answer your questions, and try to, try to get us where we, everybody's on the same sheet of music. So with that, I'm done with the presentation. My goal is under fifteen minutes.
Thank you, Chief.
Counselor.
Mayor.
Counselor Forstman.
How many times, and I don't know if you have this really available, but how often would you say you respond, you and Lucas respond? And how often does our equipment get held up? Maybe like in a year? How often have you seen our equipment get held up where you had to respond?
Oh, I, you know what, I'll bet Chief Lucas and I, maybe half a dozen times a year that we have to jump over and do that. Our crews are amazingly flexible about cross-staffing or doing, just doing the right thing. And sometimes we'll just meet him and drive for him, you know. So, yeah. We just, we listen to the radio all the time, and we're here to help when we can. The other night was two o'clock in the morning when it went off, and so I didn't jump out of bed for that one.
But it's not, we're not, sorry, Mayor, we're not having to do that in order to, like, we're not being so constrained with staffing that we're having to have you guys respond on a regular basis by any means.
No, and like I said, it may be if you average the whole year, it's once a week that that happens. And, you know, if we took out the low acuity calls, if we weren't doing interfacility transports, and, you know, that's a great system discussion to have, should we be? You look at, if you go up north and you see the private ambulance that's been in Spokane County for three decades now, they, they just raise their rates, ninety-six percent. And so Spokane Valley Nine said, we're not doing it. We're going to start transporting our citizens ourselves. Spokane Eight, Spokane Five, Spokane Three, they're all making that same look because they're trying to take care of their citizens by being there. And it's just, it's tough for a private company to make money. You know, it's why there's not private school bus, you know, companies left and right. It's just a difficult space to make money.
Counselor Forstman.
I'll let him go, Senator.
Counselor Spickelbauer.
I'll have mine next.
Did you say that that unit that's stationed over in Clarkston, do they respond to all of the Clarkston Station's calls, or just, they're just responding from that Clarkston Station here?
So the, the unit that's stationed over there is up in the Clarkston Heights, so it's in Assotin County Fire District One Station. Clarkston Fire Department has their own unit for their two square miles, and that's the levy that's coming up for them. So our unit over there, they respond to anywhere in Assotin County except the city of Clarkston, and then they cover into southwest Lewiston or anywhere else. They'll go to Lapway, they'll go wherever that next call is. If they're the one that's up there, then they'll respond to that call.
Would it make more sense to have them in the Clarkston Station that's closer?
You know, it's a great question. I haven't done any response times, and frankly, the Clarkston, when this happened, Clarkston Fire Department was the one that walked away from working with the group. So it was kind of a move of, okay, they're not going to play with the group. And so, and I think when you look at it, up there on the hill, you can, you're down into the Clarkston Flats pretty quick. That's a four or five-minute response down there. Plus, you can come down Thirteenth, you can go down over into the golf club, and you can shoot out to up Assotin Canyon there and into the city of Assotin. So it's a pretty, it's a pretty central place.
I just can't get my head around our advantage to have them there.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd be happy to, because I can show you a lot more detail than I've provided today.
Counselor President Kleber.
Just a comment, follow-up. I think Chief Michael Bus at the time, they were doing some time trials from that station up to the Elks Club, and it was actually faster from there, you know, the Elks Edition than it was from any of our stations.
That's correct. It beats us by a minute, a full minute. And if you're, you know, you think a minute's not a lot, but if you, if you're not breathing, a minute's, that's the difference between survival and non-survival and a cardiac arrest.
I know we've talked about in the NSAP, and I might, I don't know if it was private ambulance was the right word, but we talked about like a service that would go to people's houses and help patients make sure they're taking their medications. And was that still under the same umbrella as like private ambulance, or was that something, I think it was called something different, I felt like.
Yeah. That whole, the umbrella for that whole service is called Mobile Integrated Health. And there's lots of models around the country that are looking at low acuity care. Clarkston Fire Department right now has a grant, and they have one person, that that's what they do. They go out and they essentially make appointments, and they make house calls. They're doing follow-up for high-risk patients so that they don't readmit to the hospital. That is the number one way that hospitals can make money paying for that. If you get readmitted to the hospital on Medicare within thirty days for the same diagnosis, the hospital doesn't get paid. So it saves hospitals a lot of money to go ahead and invest in things. So the big pilot programs that you've seen out of Mobile Integrated Health is in Florida, in Arizona, and Washington State Auditor, I'm going to be going to a conference in the Tri-Cities area here in the next few weeks. The Washington State Auditor just released a study they did that really found that it's very efficacious in delivering healthcare in a more financially stable way. So that's one of the things we, as a system, we need to look at in the future is, what does that look like? What is telemedicine doing? What is AI going to do for medicine? There's a lot of things happening in that space that it's going to be really interesting to take a look at. We also have the House Bill One that was signed by the President this last year, allocated fifty billion dollars over the next five years to rural healthcare in America. So both Washington and Idaho Departments of EMS and Health are working with those -- So both Washington and Idaho Departments of EMS and Health are working with those folks at the federal level to say, these are programs that we could look at putting in place. Mobile Integrated Health, the next-gen 911 system. If you can't even call 911, because that system's not built out in rural America, then it's pretty hard to get somebody to come and help you. And so telemedicine, EMS is an essential service, lots of those things are going to be going on in the next five to 10 years.
Counselor Wright.
Yeah, just on the cost model, and I know we're not doing a big, deep dive, but, but one of the things I'd like to better understand is how we, how we build out that cost model, you know, when we're going to the Sooton Fire District One, we say, you know, we do this many calls, here's how much a call costs us, not just the, you know, the fees to Medicaid or Medicare, or the ambulance fees, the patient pays, but, you know, we, we put this many hours on our vehicle, we use this much material in our vehicle or supplies in our vehicle, and almost laid out, like, you know, that's going to cost you this much on average, this much on average. And just better understand, how do we structure that so when we go into a discussion with Sooton County or Sooton County Fire District, how we're sort of showing them, this is, this is the cost and Lewiston can't cover that cost for you. Like it's, it's your cost, you've got to cover it.
Yeah, it's a great point. And that's exactly what ground emergency medical transport does, is, is we provide them all of our data, the square footage, the people, the training cost, the vehicles, the depreciation on the vehicles, the depreciation on the cardiac monitors, the ventilators, the gurneys, all of that is all calculated in it. And that's why I say, I really feel good that that's the number we're using, because I can say, nobody's, nobody's working one over on anybody. It's transparent, it's out there, it's public record. We're working in, within the city to even shore those numbers up better. And some of the, anytime you know, you look at, if you've ever done a cost analysis study and, oh, Amy's not here, I need my phone a friend. There's a, there's a phrase, it's this, "Our Cost Survey" thing or something they do and people, like they watch you. All day long, they watch you and they write down everything you do and then they, they just randomly sample and they use some mathematical formulas to kind of say, this is how much time you spend doing it. Time, time, Mayor, not jumping, time cost analysis, time study, time study analysis?
Yeah, we do time studies once per month.
Yeah, times, maybe that's a time study analysis. Anyhow, so it's really difficult to, everything is going to be an estimate, the tighter you want the estimate, the more money you spend to get that number back. And where Amy has said, they have to do it for the enterprise funds, so they have to look and say, well, how much time do the payroll clerk spend on the enterprise fund payroll? And so they have to break that down. And I think that that's, GMT's got that for us, as best as we have anything right now, and we're going to keep trying to shore that up. I think when I've sat down with the Sooton County Commissioner, that's in charge of that, and when we sat down with the county commissioners, people are very, they're, "Oh yeah, I see it, okay, yeah." There's a gap there and it's, nobody is arguing that the city of Lewiston should carry that gap. It's, but I think people also, we have to, there's financial realities that everybody lives in and, and I think that, I think the partnerships we've built and how we're building those partnerships, and that's something for the council to decide, is, is, you know, how, you know, my job's to give you the information and so that you know what you're talking about. And that's why I really set this up for the work session, so that when we get to the contracts, you understand and you've had time, a couple of weeks to talk to me, to get more information, so that we can really, then the contract is kind of, you understand what it is you're voting for.
Counselor Wright.
Yeah, so then the other piece is, and you touched on this a little bit, the sort of those benchmarks or key indicators around our, our staffing versus, you know, contracts that we're having with different areas. So, do we, do we have indicators where we're like, okay, that we're stretched thin now? If we have this contract, we need, we need more people or, what are we looking at to see that? Is it, is it response times, is it availability? And how closely are we monitoring that?
Yeah, I did, it's, it's an area where we can be stronger, to be sure. What we have out there unfortunately right now is a lot of subjective opinion about, oh, we're so busy. But then when I look at the, just the hard numbers of how many calls a unit's going on and what we call unit utilization hours and stuff, we are not at those tipping points or those management action points that you would look at a system. Now, I say that, I'm not saying people aren't tired, or I'm not saying that people don't feel like they've gone on a lot of calls. But for instance, you can look at systems where a medic unit goes on 20 calls a day. Now, when you're going on 10 calls a day, you're exhausted and you feel it. And it never feels good to have somebody say, well, you're not doing 20 a day. Well, that's not, that's not the point, they still feel tired. So acknowledging fatigue, acknowledging all of those other things that are going on and trying to put some kind of a numerical value, an objective numerical value to that is very difficult. But things like reaction times, response times, total call volume, time out of service, those are statistics that we're starting to do a better job of having them, but historically we haven't had, I don't have 20 years of data unfortunately to rest upon. And that was actually identified in the 2011 study, is that, it was one of the recommendations was, hey, y'all need to have better data. Part of that problem is three dispatch centers feeding the system. Part of that problem is the limited funds to buy good records management software that does a lot of that for you. So when you're dealing with some of the, those limitations, you end up getting what you get. But there's, that's no excuse for not having at least that to look at. And so I'm working hard to get that better and it's one of our, our performance goals right now. Because I think it's important, we do have to manage, we have to, we have to watch that and we have to say, what, what are those points of diminishing service?
Just one, one more, Counselor Wright.
This one's a little bit off topic, but you were, since you were talking about, you know, people getting tired, I'd be curious, just from a, a management standpoint, if, if one fire station is getting more activity than another, do we rotate those, the guys out between the two to say, okay, now you go to this one tomorrow and you guys come to this one, because this one's getting more calls?
That, they bid those stations on an annual basis. And so they bid into them, within the stations themselves though, are captains of each of those stations, they do a good job of rotating their crew from the medic van to the engine. And so they do get a little bit of a rotation in there to try to manage that. Yeah, that's a, that's a negotiated, that's a condition of work that you have to kind of work through and it's, you know, one of the things we're trying to do right now is educate our members about sleep hygiene. Because you can say you're tired, but then on your 24 hours off, what are you doing to recover? If, we haven't taught you and trained them, it's, it's not, we all know how to sleep, right? We, as little babies, we slept and, but nobody really taught us how to sleep. How do you make your room the right temperature, the right white noise, brown noise, green noise, all of these different things? So we're trying to teach them some of that, you know, hope that then we can kind of have some of these better discussions of, you know, because some people, they just want to be at the busy station. They don't care. I don't want to, I don't want to be where the dragon's at. It's like, yeah dude, you are so toasty right now. Your wife called me and she says that she'd like to see you, you know, and I make a light of that. But yeah, it's, it's personality, it's where people are at in their career. And sometimes people, we encourage them to bid a different station just to get some different experience. I like it, you're, yeah.
Counselor Forstman.
So what would it look like if we didn't have the service contract with Sooton and like Clarkston? And one of our citizens had a medical emergency over in Clarkston, now we no longer have that contract? What does that look like as far as cost to the, to the taxpayer now that they, we cannot go over the bridge and provide service?
You know, I think, if we didn't have the contracts, and so we're in fantasy land right now, we don't have the contracts, it's really hard to totally predict what would happen. I think that we would probably still have some mutual aid agreements. Mutual aid agreements, if they're only one direction, they're not mutual aid anymore. So I think that that, you know, if we were just constantly going and helping and we didn't need that help back or get that help back, then that's not probably a feasible thing. I think that, that there's great people over in Sooton and firefighters, if one thing we do is we try to make it work. And so to our own detriment, we'll make it work. But there's no doubt, the service level would go down, people would be waiting longer, you know, throw your loved one in the car and drive them to the hospital. For people that don't have somebody that can take them, they would just have to wait until somebody could get there and provide that service, so. It's not, it's not as easy, but just the days when we had great volunteer support and you know, lots of people volunteered and helped and you could pretty much always have somebody be there. But our volunteers are a very different mix now. We have a core group of phenomenal people that have been around for 10, 15, 20 years and those are, those are the golden nuggets. And then we have a lot of people who are, they want to be in the career, so they're volunteering as young people and they move in and out. And I don't, Noel, how long do you keep most of your volunteers now?
Before you steal them, probably about three to four years.
Fair.
At one point I think, I think a third of your fire department came right out of our, right out of our.
Yeah. So it's, it's, it's just, yeah, there's a different, I can't, and I'm not going to yell the sky is falling or predict some horrible thing, but I mean, if there's nobody to, nobody to answer the call, then the communities will have to figure out what to do.
And I remember when I did, I'm trying to think of the word, it was basically I got to play fireman for a day.
Oh, the, what, you went to fire ops?
Yeah, fire ops, thank you. They talked about different departments and how they ran and it was very eye-opening to me that some departments, like I think Seattle was one of the, one of the examples they used, where their EMS, that's all they do, right? They just drive the ambulance or they just do one thing or they just, and they all, and so there, whereas our department is very versatile, as far as I, when I was asking, is like, they need to be trained in all different areas in order to supply that service, because we don't really have enough staffing or that, big of a fire department to be like, all your job is going to be do is to transport people. No, you have to be able to do, be a fireman, be EMS, provide first aid, you know, all of it. Whereas it's kind of broken out, is that correct?
Yeah, that's accurate. There's, there's some hybrid systems out there and King County Medic One is one of the oldest in the nation and where they do just EMS, that you work on the EMS rigs. The EMS rigs are still government-run, they're stationed in the fire stations and most times, once in a while they're at a house or in an industrial area where there wasn't a fire department. But that's, that's, that kind of a system. There's only a handful of those in the Pacific Northwest that I'm aware of. You have some volunteer or combination departments that people only want to do EMS. And so like the Cul-de-sac QRU, when, when it's up and functioning, it's just people that want to do EMS, but a lot of them are on the volunteer fire department too. It's just, they kind of go hand in hand, a lot of people, but some people don't want to do the blood, so they just, Noel's got some fire-only guys who are like, yeah, I don't go on those calls. They just don't want to do blood vomit and everything else. But for, for our area, the dual role fire EMS, rescue, hazmat, all of those things are best served by the one group of people that do it all.
My question for following up with that, or where I was kind of getting with that was, can that sometimes attribute to where, like, wear and tear on the, on the men and the men doing the work? Because it can be more tiring playing multiple roles.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. I would say that, that busy's busy and most fire departments do not have the number of fire calls alone to keep people busy. And so if you ran only fire, you're bored. And that has all of its own, we call that rust out, that has all of its own little problems is you're not getting enough experience, enough volume, and then you got to create training opportunities and, and really work hard to stay, you know, sharp. So you can be too busy and not busy enough, burnout and rust out on both sides. I think that the people that want to just do EMS will migrate to systems where there's only EMS. But there's very few systems that are only fire in the West. In, in the West, we basically took that on, because you go back to the 1970s and you had fire departments that were staffed and, and anybody that visited a fire department, and I'm looking at some of the older crew, there were ping pong tables and pool tables and, you know, there was, it was a club, they played cards a lot and they, and when EMS came along and cities were faced with, hey, we need to provide this service for our citizens, the fire departments went, wait a minute, we have capacity, we have time and we'll go do that. There's a couple in, in the history and the system of EMS systems, there's one back in the Boston area where they said, uh-uh, we're not doing EMS, but we'll maintenance the city buses. And so they became a fire department that did fleet maintenance for their city. Austin, Texas, they said, we're not paying EMS workers what we pay firefighters. And so they created a whole new city EMS department. And over the next 20 years, those two systems eventually merged together and people just saw that you double your workforce when you, when you start doing that, instead of having people that are downtime all the time.
Hey Counselor, I think we'll close this up. Chief, thank you. I know we're going to get another shot at this here soon, so Counselor, I think what we have is, we have to, your homework and get ready, because we have some decisions to make. Noel is here today, he certainly is, has a vested interest in what you do and Noel's probably available too if you ever have questions.
Yeah, please, please call us and ask us. You'll get better answers that way than if you wait until the 27th and ask us. We didn't bring, bring all the information with us to be able to answer questions. Thank you.
I'm going to have you introduce yourself for the record if you're going to speak.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes, the green speaker.
Otherwise I'd get in trouble with legal folks.
Noel Harden, the Sooton County Fire Chief. I just wanted to touch on, I think Counselor McLeiber and myself probably have the most historical perspective of all of this, because I believe you were on the council back when you made that transition. So I just want to say, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out. Chief Wright-Meyer has all of my information. I think it's important that we continue these discussions, because it is a partnership. For example, I know Counselor Wright was asking about like wear and tear on ambulances. We had those discussions back in the day, before, for example, Medic 73 was based out of downtown Lewiston and still responding into Sooton County, that was their, their goal. And so by actually placing the ambulance over there, was less mileage, but those being put on that vehicle, those having to go out there all the time anyway. So those, those discussions, I mean, a long time ago, so I don't have anything tangible today, but those are, those are things to consider, that, you know, where the location is and where the gut of that call volume is. We're always looking at improved response times and how can we do that valley-wide? And that was one of the reasons why we married up with, with Lewiston years ago, we were able to improve response times and even the first, honestly, the first three weeks into the program. I can give you an example of a call where a Vista worker was hit with a high trans, high voltage transmission line and under that, under the new system, we had people working on it within two to three minutes. Under the old system, it was more like 12 to 15. And that family and that company attribute the, that person living today because of the system that we build and response times. So sometimes, yeah, it is about dollars and cents, sometimes it's about the service we provide to people and making sure we're doing the right things for our, our people and getting the, getting the service to where it's needed. So just wanted to touch on that real quick, I appreciate your time.
Thank you Noel, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Counselors, next we'll move to room number seven, unfinished and new business, item A, City Counselor Comments. Comments should not be related to an item pertinent for the council and items may come before the council in foreseeable future, shall be limited to comments, not discussion. Counselor Klein, I'll start with you, if you have any comments for us.
I don't have any comments right now.
Thank you Counselor. Counselor. Question from Counselor Forstman.
I just wanted to point out, hopefully if someone, if they're listening, that there is a League of Women Voters Lewiston Clerk Valley forum for the council members to be at. And so if you want to hear from your up-and-coming candidates and see what they stand on and what they, what they want to see for this valley, please come to that. It is Tuesday, October 14th at 6:30 to 8:00 at the Lewiston Library on the second floor, same area that we do our regular council meetings. Again, that is Tuesday, October 14th at 6:30 to 8:00 PM and they will have questions, pre-questions written out from the candidates that people can send in, citizens can send in for questions for the candidates and then also I think the mayors, up-and-coming mayors will have kind of a back and forth discussion. So please come to that if you want to know about your candidates. It's a, it's a good forum and there's lots of space for citizens to, to hear and be a part of.
Thank you Counselor, for the comments.
Okay, City Boards and Commissioners, lay us on updates. What do you know? Okay. Mayor comments? Counselors, I just want to touch on something that Patty Weeks shared with us, her county auditor, clerk, treasurer, she does all kinds, well not the treasurer, that's messy, but she does a lot of things for us. And it's interesting, and this was new, she, that she just released tonight for us, but our levy went down. our levy went down, that's great news, and so, it's, I think it's kind of a testimony to when we talk about budgets, you know, she said, even with a 3% increase from taking foregone, the levy still went down, so, it just talks about those relationships that we have with valuation and budgets and everything else, so it's not as clear or direct as it appears sometime, but what that means is everybody's going to pay less for $100,000 on property taxes, so, it speaks to the growth that we're having in the city, we have more growth, and we budget conservatively, like we've done over four years, and plan conservatively, the levy probably is going to go down again, so I think we have a lot to celebrate there, and I was very happy to receive this news today. Patty gave an example of $300,000 home, just an example, doesn't mean that it couldn't go up, but using that example here, everybody's taxes go down a little bit, so, that's going in the right direction while we're planning for the future, so I'm very excited to receive that news, and I'm glad that the newspaper was here to cover that, I hope they share that good news with everyone, so. Item 7D, agenda topics, do we have any today? Counselors, okay, adjournment, entertain a motion?
Still moved.
Second? Second?
It's moved by Counsel President Kleber, second by Counselor Wright, adjourned, those in favor, please say goodbye by saying aye.
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 Close. They are adjourned, thank you, Counsel.